And good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the December 5th, 2022 meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. I will call the meeting to order, and I will welcome everyone to this meeting. I will call on Vice Chairwoman Stewart to introduce Pastor Ernest Jones, who will give us our invocation.
Thank you, Chairman Adams. At this time, we will call to the stage Pastor Ernest Jones, who is the bishop and founder of True Vine World Outreach Ministries. Pastor Jones.
Could you stand with me, and let's pray? Let us pray. Our Father, now God, we thank you for this time of gathering on tonight and for the purpose for which we've come. We thank you for those that have chosen to serve our Cumberland County community in a way that represents you on tonight. We pray that your blessing will be upon each and every one that is being taken the oath of office on tonight, Lord God. We pray for your wisdom and your guidance to rest upon this Board of Commissioners, Lord God, as they do the work that you've assigned to them to do, Lord God. Father, we pray that you would bless all of us that have gathered and come here for this celebration of what you have done in our community right now in the name of Jesus. And so, Father, we ask that you would be here with us on tonight. Let your presence rest in this place as we honor you in all things that's done. We bind all works of the enemy that may try to come against the work that you have for this community, and we want you to know, Lord God, that we love you and we appreciate you. Now, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming to our meeting. It is a truly a great meeting as we swear in some of our new commissioners. At this time, I'd ask all elected officials if you just stand and kind of wave your hand so we know that you're here. And we do have, you know, we have a delegation coming in, so I'm not going to forget my new members of the delegation because they didn't stand because they don't think they were elected, but they are. So, we do have Senator Val Applewhite and I think Representative Francis Jackson. Where is she? There she is over there. And I think I saw Representative Charles Smith, too. Where is Charles? He's way back in the back. All right. With that, I will ask Commissioner Evans to come to the front with me for a moment. And it does give me a great opportunity, and I do, it is bittersweet that we've served together for these last eight years. Charles has served on the City Council, has served on the bigger board of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, who represent the entire county. All right, so I'll just let everybody know that because I do have a City Council person here. Commissioner, City Council person Shaquille Ingram here. But Charles, I think that we know that you've served the citizens of Cumberland County with distinction, and we would not, we would be remiss if we didn't recognize you on your way out. Put my glasses off. I gotta put them back on now. You know, it's getting to be that age. You're a little older than I am, but that's okay.
Oh, stop it.
We were in third grade together, but, you know, that goes way back.
Which means he's still older. A lot older.
Presented to Charles E. Evans in recognition of outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County and as a member of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, December the 6th, 2010, to December the 5th, 2022, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, this the fifth day of December, 2022. And Charles, on your way out the door, we wanted to present you with this book. The book, and he'll show it to everybody as we finish, is of every time that you were, after we had our swearing ins and when you were seated as a commissioner.
Oh, man, that's cool.
And if you could have a couple of words.
That's cool. That's cool. And they gave me the microphone. I must tell you.
But I got the gavel.
You always have the gavel. First of all, I give it all to God and all my praises and thanks go to him for allowing me to be here tonight and also to the citizens of Cumberland County. Thank you so much for entrusting me with the opportunity to serve you, and it's such an honor to have served on the Board of Commissioners representing the citizens of Cumberland County. I tell you what, I couldn't have asked for a better job. And so, hopefully, in some other capacity, I will be serving you again. But right now, I am so grateful to have had this opportunity. To the Board of Commissioners, thank you for your help and support during my tenure here, and I will be remiss if I did not say to the staff members of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, you are so awesome wherever you are sitting at, because without you, there will be no us, because you make sure that we do everything, the very best way that we could, to represent the citizens of Cumberland County. And I almost forgot my family even though they're not here, but I want them to know that I love them, and I would like to thank them for sticking with me. God bless each and every one of you. Godspeed. They really want me to go.
It dropped.
Thank Mr. Evans, Commissioner Evans, for his service. And now, this gives me a great pleasure as the outgoing chairman, and I do thank this board for allowing me to serve this past year as their chairman. We had many great moments, and just to name a few of our 2022 economic development things that we did together. Amazon announced their $1.3 million square foot distribution facility that will employ more than 500 employees, and that's scheduled for a 2023 opening. Plan C Crypto announced and launched the first crypto mining operations in Cumberland County, creating 19 jobs. Fortuna BMC started operations in FCEDC's core business accelerator and now employs over 100 locally. MetroNet has continued their 75 million buildout and launched their gigabyte fiber optic services. We received a $4 million federal grant for the HR talent portal to serve transitioning soldiers and their families. Chinmet announced a $1.2 million investment, creating 30 jobs, providing affordable health care to underserved neighborhoods. We received this board more than $1.3 million combined to make improvements at the Sand Hill Road site from Golden Leaf and the North Carolina Southeast Partnership. Amazon and FedEx opened a new facilities in the former Sofers Warehouse on Dunn Road. And NVR announced they were creating 189 jobs and building a new 145,000 square foot manufacturing facility on Dunn Road. That's just a few of the economic developments that we had. We also, this board, had many, many accomplishments, and I want to take this opportunity to say that I enjoyed serving as the chairman of your board and that serving the citizens of Cumberland County. And I would tell everyone, and I know some of our families are here, that as we serve, our families sit at home, and they allow us to do the county's work. And as the chairman, there was many times that I was out. So, I would thank my beautiful wife, Judge Gail Adams, for allowing me to be able to do that and to serve this community, and we hear from her in just a moment as she swears me in. Not swears at me, but swears me in this current. So, with that, I do have a short video. Commissioner Kee, you knew I'd have a short video, but it is short this year, Commissioner Kee. And we will ask you to wash the screens. I have not seen this video, so it is going to be with Mr. Haney at our assistant manager. I told our new manager, Ms. Pascoe, that if it doesn't come off good, she can start advertising for an assistant manager spot tomorrow. So, Brian is on the hook. So, how well y'all clap after this will depend on whether he's employed tomorrow morning. So, thank you, Brian. Look at him, he's here to clap for him.
2022 was a year of significant transition in Cumberland County as we continued our journey through and out of the COVID-19 pandemic and worked to address its direct and indirect effects on our workforce and economy. And the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners made significant investments in our county's future and took action to set the county up for success as we move forward. The beginning of the year saw the resurgence of COVID-19 with the Omicron variants that spread throughout the community. Just as they did the previous two years, Cumberland County's employees and citizens came together to continue working to protect themselves and others from COVID-19. County Health Department staff distributed masks and administered vaccines to residents, including children under five years old starting in June, and then the new bivalent Omicron boosters in the fall. The year also saw signs of moving past the pandemic as masks became optional in most county buildings, and the Board of Commissioners lifted the county's COVID-19 state of emergency in August after more than two years. The county also continued using its American Rescue Plan Act funding to benefit the community, providing $2 million to Fayetteville Technical Community College for the HOPE program, an innovative adult learner program that seeks to provide accelerated training in high-demand skills to county residents without a college degree through work-based learning internships and on-the-job training experiences with employers in the county. The county's Small Business Economic Assistance Program also resulted in nearly $2 million in funding approved for eligible small business applicants who experienced economic hardship as a result of the pandemic. County staff are continuing to move other projects forward as well, including assistance for eligible nonprofit organizations. One of the side effects of the pandemic was the Great Recession as employees reassessed the importance of work-life balance, and many left the workforce altogether. Competition for skilled workers also picked up as public sector organizations struggled to recruit and retain talent. Cumberland County was not immune, experiencing record turnover and vacancy numbers, which were compounded by unprecedented inflation. The county responded as the Board of Commissioners approved a 4% cost-of-living adjustment for employees in the fiscal year 2023 budget, along with additional market adjustments for law enforcement and detention center personnel. The board also provided funding for a classification and compensation study to examine the county's market competitiveness and where employees are paid in their grades based on experience. In order to bridge the gap until the study is completed, the board also agreed to use displaced American Rescue Plan funding to provide eligible full-time employees with $4,000 retention incentives spread across the fiscal year, along with prorated incentives for part-time employees. The county also continued promoting incentives such as remote work and flexible schedules where possible and held an organization-wide career fair in July to raise awareness about career opportunities with the county's departments. 2022 also saw the completion of a number of major projects and initiatives and significant progress on others. The county joined with Fayetteville Technical Community College to celebrate the completion of the 24,000-square-foot FTCC Cumberland County Regional Fire and Rescue Training Center, which will dramatically enhance emergency response by providing state-of-the-art fire and rescue training for fire and emergency personnel from Cumberland County and beyond. We also gathered with Fayetteville State University to cut the ribbon on the Fayetteville Cumberland Regional Entrepreneur and Business Hub, which will provide valuable regional resources to help small businesses in Cumberland County and the surrounding region succeed. Commissioners cut the ribbon on several county facilities, including a reimagined Anne Street landfill that features a new scale house and an enhanced and more convenient customer experience. The county also completed the renovation of 500 Executive Place to serve as a new emergency services center. In addition to providing a new home for emergency services staff, including a state-of-the-art 911 center, the facility will also house the county's Emergency Operations Center, which will significantly enhance the county's ability to effectively respond to major natural disasters and emergencies. On November 15th, Cumberland County Sheriff Ennis Wright's four in 19 new deputies who graduated from the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office's First Academy. The county also received $1 million in funding from the state budget to support construction of a homeless shelter and is currently in the process of selecting a site for the facility. In the area of recreation, the board approved a partnership in March to provide funding in support of a new aquatic center in Hope Mills. And in November, the town of Spring Lake merged its Parks and Recreation Department with Fayetteville Cumberland County Parks and Recreation, a partnership that will provide a cost savings to the town and shift management of their recreational facilities to Fayetteville Cumberland Parks and Recreation. Significant progress was made on the new Crown Event Center, a multipurpose event center that will replace the existing Crown Theater and Arena, which are set to close in November 2025. The Board of Commissioners Crown Event Center Committee held a project kickoff in April with the owner's representative, MBP Carolinas, and established guiding principles for the project through an interactive community engagement process. In November, the board selected Ewing Cole as the architect for the project and revealed after a seven-month site selection process that the new Crown Event Center will be located in downtown Fayetteville in front of the Judge E. Maurice Braswell Cumberland County Courthouse. The selection of a construction manager is at risk, and the design process will get underway in early 2023. Finally, 2022 was a year of transition as the county said goodbye to a number of longtime employees and welcomed others to the team. Clerk to the Board of Commissioners Candace White retired in November, and the board appointed Deputy Clerk Andrea Tebe to the role. In the county manager's office, two new assistant county managers joined the team, while Assistant County Manager for Environmental and Community Safety Tracy Jackson retired after seven years with the county. And County Manager Amy Cannon retired at the end of November after eight years as county manager and more than 32 years working for Cumberland County. The board hired former Chatham County Manager Renee Pascal to serve as interim manager effective December 1st. And on November 28th, the board announced that Roanoke, Virginia Deputy City Manager Clarence Greer has been hired as the next county manager. Greer, who previously served as Deputy County Manager in Guilford County and Assistant County Manager and Chief Finance Officer in Orange County, will start on March 1st, 2023. 2022 proved to be a year of significant transition and progress in Cumberland County and sets the stage for an extremely consequential 2023.
I guess he gets to keep his job and just go around. Welcome back, Brian. And you can see that your Board of Commissioners have been awful busy this past year, and it doesn't stop here. There are still a number of projects that are underway that we will continue to move forward, especially our homeless shelter and our Crown Event Center. With that, we will move now to the administration of oath of office, and we will ask, they will bring up the microphones. There'll be one microphone for the commissioner and one for the person administering the oath.
At this time, I would like to call W. Marshall Faircloth to the stage, who will be sworn in by the Register of Deeds Lee Warren Jr.
What a great occasion. On this night 30 years ago, Marshall and I both were first sworn in as county commissioners on Pearl Harbor Day of 1992. And you were a pleasure to serve with, as I served with some of this board, and it's a wonderful thing that you do, offering yourself when you could be home with your family, to serving the 330,000 citizens of Cumberland County. We're grateful for your service and all of your colleagues. This is the oath of office for Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. I state your name.
I'm Marshall Faircloth.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As County Commissioner of Cumberland County.
As County Commissioner of Cumberland County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This fifth day of December, 2022, congratulations.
Go this way, Marshall, because you got to sign the oath. Do you need to get a picture or something with his family? Everybody, come on in. Y'all family, right? Y'all are family, right? Come on, y'all can get a little closer together. Uh-oh.
And next would be Veronica Jones, who will be sworn in by Judge Stephen Stokes.
Come on, Ralph, so they can see you. There you go. Come on up. All right.
All set? Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Veronica B. Jones.
I, Veronica B. Jones.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As County Commissioner.
As County Commissioner.
Of Cumberland County.
Of Cumberland County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Come out here, you bear to sign the, you need to sign your oath right here. Get your picture. Yeah, come on in, son. Come on in. Come on in.
At this time, we will call Dr. Jeanette Council, who will be sworn in by District Court Judge Cole Jordan.
And repeat after me. I.
I.
State your name. State your name.
Jeanette Council.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as County Commissioner of Cumberland County, so help me God. Do you so solemnly swear?
I do.
Get your picture. No, but I'll take that. John, I do need mine, too, now.
Yeah, one more. At this time, we will have Glenn Adams, who will be sworn in by Resident Superior Court Judge Gail Adams.
That's what you can do when your chairman's here. For about five more minutes. Was it two more minutes?
It is indeed an honor and a privilege to swear you in. I state your name.
I, Glenn B. Adams.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as County Commissioner of Cumberland County, so help me God. Do you so swear?
I do.
Okay.
Don't be trying to get rid of me that quick. Have mercy. Ladies and gentlemen, your new Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Y'all will all stand if we can get a picture. Come on in, son. All right, turn to your right. Who over here got cameras? Turn to your right now, son. Everybody. Yeah, they just, you know, oh, that table over here on the right side. I teach my, take these pictures. Thank you. All right. We will now have elections of our new officers, which is, first one is the chairman, and I will call on Commissioner Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ex-Chair. I am pleased to nominate a lady who has served us ably and well this year, Dr. Toni Stewart. So I place her name in nomination.
Anyone else? You can, if you want to.
I second the nomination.
All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Faircloth, Commissioner Council, Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Jones.
All right. Oh, the opposition. Oh. Ladies and gentlemen, our new Cumberland County Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, Chairwoman, Chairwoman Toni Stewart.
It gives me great honor and a privilege to give this presentation to the former chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, and it says it is presented to Glenn B. Adams this fifth day of December 2022, and grateful appreciation of your leadership as chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners from December the 5th, 2016, to December the 4th, 2017, then December the 6th, 2021, to December the 5th, 2022, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Job well done.
Thank you.
Rename you J.L. Dawkins.
At this time, I will call, oh, I was ready to work. And I will have a few remarks. This is an exciting evening for me, and I'm honored and humbled to be selected to represent the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners as chairwoman. First, I want to make sure I thank my friend Charles Evans and Larry Lancaster for their years of service to the Cumberland County, and I'm grateful for the time that we shared on the board together. Charles and I took many, many, many pictures together, but Glenn is still here, so I won't miss any of that. And also, congratulations to Commissioner Marshall Faircloth and Ms. Veronica Jones on your installation to this office this evening. I'm looking forward to working with my fellow commissioners and our county staff. In March, we will welcome our new county manager, Clarence Greer. In the meantime, our interim county manager Renee Pascal will assist the board during a planning session in January focused on actions for the next three months. We will schedule a follow-up planning session in late March after Mr. Greer arrives. We have so many exciting projects underway and on the horizon, capital projects like the Crown Event Center and future governmental services center. Our 911 telecommunicators will soon be working from our new emergency service center. This board will continue to prioritize economic development, access to clean water, communication with our citizens, and being physically responsible with our American Rescue Plan investment as we work to recover from the pandemic. For me, I am most passionate about two ongoing priorities, homelessness and mental health. My pastor told me when I got elected, he said, "If you don't do anything that you talked about, this will all be for nothing." And so I am committed to continuing those endeavors. This month, environmental tests will be conducted on two proposed sites for homeless shelter, and I hope that by January, this board is able to approve a site and begin the procurement process for design services. In the meantime, we are working to partner with organizations to provide shelter during our white flag conditions. We have visited other communities and seen what is possible with vision, cooperation, and compassion. To address homelessness, we must also address mental health. The COVID pandemic and opioid use have helpful fueled a mental health crisis, and we must fight this wildfire from all sides before more children, individuals, and families are lost. Through the opioid settlement funds, we have allocated $800,000 to support a two-year pilot program for early intervention, addiction treatment, support services, reentry service, criminal justice diversion programs. There is so much to do, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve the citizens of this great county of Cumberland. Thank you. And now, at this time, I will call on Commissioner Marshall Faircloth for a
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, it gives me great pleasure to nominate a person who is not only a friend and a colleague, but a gentleman who did not begin his service to Cumberland County with the county commissioners. He's been active in this community for a long time. As a matter of fact, he served with myself and Lee Warren on the Cape Fear Valley Board back in the 1990s. And at this time, it gives me great pleasure to place a nomination, my friend and colleague, for vice chairman, Mr. Glenn Adams.
Is there a second? Second? Okay, it's been moving properly second. Commissioner Adams? All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Faircloth, Commissioner Council, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Jones.
All those opposed?
Commissioner Booze and Commissioner Council.
Thank you. At this time, we will move on to the approval of the, I'm sorry, agenda of County Manager Pascal. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, not at the moment. Sit down.
Okay, if I can have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moving properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous?
All those, okay. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Pascal, is there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I've moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moving properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second?
So we have a motion to adjourn, and it's been properly second. All those in favor? Thank you so much for coming out this evening.